Good evening, afternoon, everybody. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Let's call the roll, please, and establish a quorum.
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenere, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Thank you. Welcome to everybody to the meeting of the Sacramento City Council. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Gainsborough, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before we take the public testimony on items not on the agenda, I'd like to take this special presentation and turn it over to Councilmember Guerra, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to ask Mr. Allen Lofasso to come out, to come before the council here today. Today, we're recognizing Mr. Lofasso's service to the city on the Planning Commission. He served not only as vice chair, but chair to the Planning Commission. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Lofasso since I was a fellow in the Capitol Fellows Program right out of college, and he was a chief of staff to legislators in the, here in our state legislature. He's mentored a lot of folks throughout the time and also was a guiding force in our city planning commission, particularly through a number of our big developments that have happened here, the Golden One Center, the Downtown Plan, various areas in District Six such as Aspen One, our transitory development projects. It's a, it's a pleasure here to have Mr. Lofasso here because he's been involved with even not only just our city-specific issues, but was engaged in Secog's Blueprint project, which has changed basically how we, how we've looked at our region and our growth in transportation. I think, Mr. Mayor, you had a little bit of that with SB 375.
Sure did.
Involved with that. So today, it's my pleasure to ask Mr. Lofasso to come here today and recognize him for his years of service here as a chair of the Planning Commission and member of our commission, and give them this, this small token of recognition through this resolution. And I'll only read here, the, the resolve here. I'll start off with the first one, actually, just for all of those, everyone knows I'm a proud Sac State graduate, but here, today, I get to recognize Mr. Allen Lofasso, whereas is a graduate of the University of California, Davis, with a Bachelor of Arts degree in history, and a graduate from the University of Pacific McGeorge School of Law with his Juris Doctor degree, there for Mr. Hanson over here. Now therefore be it resolved that by the mayor and council and the city of Sacramento that we do hereby extend to Mr. Allen Lofasso our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to his community and our congratulations on a successful commission tenure, and our best wishes for his continued happiness, good health, and success in his endeavors. Mr. Allen Lofasso, thank you so much for your service to District Six and the city of Sacramento. A big round of applause, everybody.
Good man, yes. Had the privilege of knowing Allen for a long, long time through the legislative, through the years in the legislature, and you really contribute a lot, not only to the State House and to the state legislative process, but to your community as well, and really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council.
Okay, very good. What do we have? There are members. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allen, don't walk away yet. You're not done. We're just so in awe of your presence, it took us a moment to get...
You're so good, Steve.
Took us a moment. I just wanted to say thank you. I know you live in my district, but you admirably served District Six for a very long time on the Planning Commission, and having watched those meetings from time to time in my spare hours, I've always admired your knowledge of planning, just ideas, thoughtfulness, but also the particularities of our code and the spirit of them. You always brought that to the commission, sort of the, the higher purpose of the commission, but also the nitty-gritty of knowing how to get things done. And I think you exemplified that during your time as the chair and ran wonderful meetings and helped us get difficult projects through the process, but also the ones that weren't good. You helped them be better. So I just want to say thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate all of you. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, councilmembers.
Thank you, Jay Chenere. You're not done yet. Everybody wants to congratulate you.
But we're going to keep you here until at least seven o'clock, Allen. So I got to know Allen a little bit differently. We've ridden together on the NorCalAid's bike ride and spent a lot of time sitting in the saddle and talking during that time and some of our training rides, which has been really a great experience. And also have, as Mr. Hanson has, I sit in every once in a while on Planning Commission meetings when there are issues of import to my district, and I think you will be really missed. I think you did a great job on the Planning Commission and really brought value to the commission as a whole and in that to the city as a whole. So I just want to say thank you and wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Seven more members here. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say I thought you did a really great job on the Planning Commission as well. I had a couple of commissioners serve with you. Both spoke very highly of you and your role there. And then personally, I just wanted to say that, you know, we had to ask you for several things from the PNP E Committee. At one point, it was to do more. At another point, it was to do, to step down, and you just handled it so gracefully, so professionally. And I just think you're really a wonderful public servant to the city of Sacramento, which I know is something you do kind of in your spare time, but you're involved in all these wonderful clubs, and it's like you will rise up to whatever we ask of you and also be willing to step back if that's the thing we need. And I've always been impressed by that from you, so thank you for that.
Very good. And last but not least, Councilmember Harris.
So one more, Allen. I just want to thank you for all the really intelligent comments you brought to the PDC over the years. You know, you stimulated a lot of thought, and I think you steered a lot of decisions, you know, and often in just exactly the right way. On top of that, you're just a heck of a nice guy, and it's a pleasure to know you.
Takes one to know one.
Okay.
Any, Mr., any comments, Mr. Lofasso?
I just want to say this is really enjoyable recognition. You all know that the real reward is in the service itself, and I know you all know that. And I know you want to get to it, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, will you join us in a quick photo?
Of course I will.
To deliver this resolution?
Proudly, proudly, absolutely. Applause. Another round of applause for Mr. Lofasso. Allen.
Well-deserved honor. Appreciate your service.
We'll undoubtedly call on you again, Allen. All right, let us take public testimony on items not on tonight's agenda. Again, two minutes, and we'll hear from the public.
I have 15 speakers for items not on the agenda. The first is Paul Weeby, then Lara Woods, and then Fong.
Thank you, councilmembers. On behalf of the Rainbow Chamber of Commerce and Vice Mayor Steve Hanson, we wanted to present to Steve Hanson the Lavender Heights official street sign topper. This is a commemorative of it, but this is the street sign topper, so we wanted to present this to Vice Mayor Hanson for all of his hard work to get Lavender Heights established as an area of Sacramento.
Thank you, Paul. [applause] Is there going to be a fight over who gets the sign?
Congratulations. Steve, take, take, take the photo, of course.
Did you see these, Mayor?
I did. That's beautiful, just beautiful. Excellent. Love it. Deserved, Steve. Congratulations, Steve. Very well deserved. Keep, keep on...
Our next speaker is Lara Woods, then Fong, then Armando.
Hi, everybody. Mr. Mayor, city councilmembers, Larry Carr, my friend. My name is Laura Woods, and a long time ago, I had a lot of activity done with the workings in the city with the county supervisor's office and city councils, and I was very impressed then. My work was out with the Floor and Row Partnership and the different partnerships in the area, and I received an award at one point for cleaning streets in Sacramento. I'm reminding you of that because I'm now in a dilemma myself. The services that I've looked for and helped everybody come into connection with failed me on, in January. I had a double mastectomy facing cancer for the second time and was discharged due to whatever arrangements the hospital made to the streets. The Salvation Army was not available, the bed hadn't been confirmed for me, and I've been homeless ever since. I was homeless before that. I'm homeless now. I start chemotherapy tomorrow morning for 18 weeks. I have been befriended by the Quinn Cottages and Mercy Housing over off of A Street. I swept the street, uh, street up yesterday, the entire street. I swept it and piled it up and cleaned it up for, to show them that I appreciate all their work from Loews and Fishes and the Volunteers of America. And I told them that I was coming here tonight to tell you guys, thank you. Thank you for all the services that you make available to the people that are out there. Thank you for all the services that are, you are making happening as we speak now. And to say, I need some help, you know? And this, I, I know that this is the place that change happens, positive change. So I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you've done and you're doing in this city. And an eight-year-old kid called me cancer killer, so I'm here just to tell you guys, you know, my name's Laura Woods, and I, I'm your ally in all this. So please...
All right. We, we pray for your good health, okay?
Yes, sir.
And recovery.
Yes, sir.
We really do, and thank you for your...
Second cancer, sir. I'm going to beat it.
You're darn right you are.
Yes, sir. So thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is...
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just one question. Mr. City Attorney, given that she apparently was released by one of our local facilities, can you have your office reach out to her and get some of the details so that we can appropriately follow up to see if that was an appropriate situation? And then I'll have a follow-up item during council comments.
Our next speaker is Fong, then Armando, and then Wanda Cleveland.
[speaking Spanish]. I am saying this because we are again here to ask for you to help with a homeless situation. When I say Gonghei Fat Choi, it is really saying, this is the new year. I am here to represent a, a question of what could happen in the next 2018. I am a harbinger. Every week, you have a harbinger or the harbingers to announce the deaths of people. On your watch, as the stewards of the needy and vulnerable, you place a bloody used bandage on a bleeding wound and pat yourself on the back and show up for photo ops. Standing on the dead bodies of the unhoused people, the 200-bed shelter is not enough for over 1,500 people still vulnerable to the elements while you still worry about criteria for the vulnerability. You have outside contracts to clean up blaming it on the drug addicts who are homeless when they could be anyone of you. 64 million for six years? Let that sink into your hollow heads and hearts. Still, no public bathrooms, hand washing stations, or self-determined shelters. You worry about riots that disturb your sleep, approving 825,000 to prescribe riots so that you can silence any resistance to your collusion with the business. Cease and desist stickers placed on tents so people can leave their possessions and, or have them confiscate it from them.
Your time is up, please.
Or making, I'm almost done. Or making people pay fines over $800. Tell me, how are you helping the people?
Next speaker, our next speaker is Armando, then Wanda Cleveland. Armando? I don't see Armando. Wanda Cleveland. And then following Ms. Cleveland is Pastor Joan Louis Canard.
Good evening. Glad to see that we all showed up for our jobs this afternoon. I want to thank you for all the things that you guys have done. You are doing a great thing by putting the unhomed in shelters. As you seen last week, the 200 beds are not near enough. Another issue I have is when you guys sit up here and we roared people of their job and the people that are doing outreach for your homeless don't get recognized, but get told, oh, no, we don't need your voice here. Even, I was even told by our mayor here that my voice doesn't count.
I never said that.
My voice does count. I went to the city council at Elk Grove. Every, each and every person that comes here, voice gets heard and has rights. I went to Elk Grove last week, and do you know, they're getting in touch with you guys because they also think the problem, the homeless problem, is not just their problem. I'm hoping that we all can get together as a group, as individuals, caring monetarily and physically for these unhomed people. I'd like to see one of you guys go and observe the outside like it is right now and sleep one night, one night, with these homeless people. And you know what? Things will all change. It's freezing out there, you, you guys. Don't you get it? Two people die every week. How many more are going to die before you guys actually do something?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pastor Joan Louis Canard, and then Robert Copland, Copeland, excuse me.
Canard, is there anything we can do to help you other than anybody on our staff who can talk to you a little bit about helping you out as opposed to talking to us as a group?
1,500 people that are...
Excuse me. Oh, please. Go ahead, ma'am. I just want to see if there's a way we might be able to help you other than just talking to the entire group here.
Good evening. I will boycott Campbell Soup products. They have no recollection of me being sexually harassed in April and/or May of 1993, according to Don Sutton, Candace, New Jersey. Monies need to be given to me. I ask for a large amount. It will be used for legalization of prostitution, of course, my bills. It will help stop homelessness, rape, incessantly challenged adults, kids, little kids, sex trafficking, non-consexual sex. I never asked before. Letters B, number four, is Holy Spirit and/or Holy Ghost and/or Great White Spirit. Please boycott Campbell Soup products. Legalization of prostitution needs to be getting started. I, I'm glad there is rent control here in California. 50 states need to have that and the territories worldwide. Also, the earth will be a billion years old, A.D. Hugh Hefner said he didn't want to regret anything. The same thing I said to my Lord God, Father, I don't want to regret anything. I need a sexual harassment lawyer. Oh, where is a sexual harassment lawyer? President Donald Trump, be merciful to the legal aliens, especially everyone. Be merciful. You'll need mercy one day. Car insurance is high. Ooh, child, things are going to get easier. Ooh, child, things are going to get brighter. I'm not going to put microchips in my body, maybe be cancerous. Apple Computer allegedly killed a 91-year-old customer, a male, trying to get help at customer service. Esther H., you'll be there one day.
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, and then Bob Erlynbusch.
Are you going to listen, Mayor Steinberg? This is what I'm going to work on tonight, collecting petitions for repeal cost to Hawkins, and then when Sacramento has their ballot measure for rate control, I'll be working on that. Two, Mayor Steinberg said that Sacramento's not moving fast enough to help, help the homeless population a couple of weeks ago. I agree with you for once. Do Mayor Steinberg see those videos those ladies brought last week about the homeless encampments? What are you going to do about that? I mean, having homeless, homeless sitting by along the riverbank? What are you going to do to help the homeless? I have not heard nothing. Two, when are you going to get some more, streamline the production of apartments, houses in Sacramento? Because we're way under, we don't have enough apartments and houses in Sacramento for everybody. That's one of the reasons why rents should keep on going up in Sacramento. Any new construction should be along lines of the Affordable Disability Act in Sacramento. And I want to see you apply that to the every construction, whether it's commercial, residential, or business or office space. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Erlynbusch, and then Ron Elmsley.
Good evening. Bob Erlynbusch with the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. What your staff person is passing out to you is a brief summary of our patient dumping or discharge to the streets survey that we did a couple of weeks ago, along with a set of recommendations that hopefully you're fully aware of at this point with the great coverage from the Sacramento Bee. As the Bee highlighted, one of the things that I summarized is this is not a case of discharging homeless people to the streets on, every once in a while, or bad apples, a few cases of bad apples. This is every major hospital in the region. UC Davis, and as you heard from Laura, UC Davis Cancer Center specifically, Sutter, Mercy, Kaiser, Dignity Health, and sadly, the Sacramento County Adult Protective Services just about two weeks ago discharged a homeless person in the evening to winter shelter, 78 years old, in soiled clothes. And I just found out that, from Councilmember Hanson, that there was a more recent case of a hospital in Stockton discharged a quadruple amputee. All of this is immoral. It's absolutely unacceptable, and Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more. You were quoted as saying, this is a catalyst, these examples, horrifying examples, are catalysts for change. Well, tonight, that change needs to begin. I call upon you to do two things tonight. Specifically, immediately agendize the patient dumping issue for law and legislation, who will work, and the second thing, in tandem, have the city attorney begin to work with the Law and Leg Committee to come up with a city ordinance similar to or identical to the one passed by the city council in Los Angeles about 10 years ago, 2008 specifically, and then couple that with a series of serious fines. The only thing that worked in Los Angeles was not the ordinance, it was Mike Fuhr, the city attorney, having the gumption, so to speak, to begin fining the local hospitals, starting with Kaiser, the most notorious, anywhere from a quarter of a million to a million-dollar civic fines per occurrence. That's what we need to do to have a zero tolerance policy on patient dumping.
Well, thank you. These are, these are very thoughtful set of recommendations, and I will talk to the Law and Leg Chair, and we'll figure out how we can make sure we, we have a full discussion on these items. Of course, part of what we are focused on, like a laser, is raising the private dollars and some of the public dollars to create more housing for people. And tomorrow, you'll hear an announcement about our putting forward this request for information about efficiency homes. It's not everything, but we've got to have viable housing alternatives for people in addition to more shelter so that we can assess and refer people to the permanent housing. And so this requires a comprehensive set of solutions, and this is important. Thank you, Bob.
I agree with you, obviously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And hopefully, we'll act with a sense of expediency.
Yes, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley, then Trina Allen, then James Fago-Clark. Mr. Elmsley?
I see the city constantly wanting to grow, have a bigger population. That's overriding direction that the city wants to go, and they mentioned that they want to have good-paying jobs. Does that mean that it's greater than the average person now in Sacramento? And how would the average person now or beneath average think about wanting even greater wealth of people making money? So it's, I see it as kind of a, an insult to the people who voted for you, you know, to keep on saying this. Another thing is, you folks keep on wanting to give large amounts of money to big corporations if they move here, but they don't give big sums of money to people to house them. It's always, we need these bigger plants. They're going to bring in all these high-paying jobs, and that's the overriding thought that occurs. So I, for one, being a, a normal monetary person, you know, in the middle, I think it's insulting personally that you constantly, it's just, you can't help yourself. And another tack...
I've got 20 seconds, Mr. Elmsley.
Okay. Another one is, you're going to build 1,000 houses. What are going to happen to all the others? Are they just going to be 1,000 real lucky people and all the rest are out? Thank you.
Here's Trina Allen, and then James Fago-Clark. And after Ms. Allen, we have five more speakers.
Good evening.
Viable housing is rent control, so I think you should agendize that. Hello, my name is Trina Allen, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento to demand a complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers shouldn't be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence on our community. Any action the city makes that uses our tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community that it serves. As a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. The training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of trainings curriculum. The training should conclude with a test of understanding, and the trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training. And as a proudly queer person, I'm far less concerned with colorful street toppers or toppers as I am with housing our queer and trans youth, as with protecting black and brown community members from state violence, as with providing rent control and affordable housing. Queer liberation has never, ever had anything to do with assimilating to a white supremacist, capitalistic, and homonormative agenda. Our history is radical and collectivist. You should know this. You should know your history. Another one is, you're gonna build a thousand houses. What are gonna happen to all the others? They're just gonna be a thousand real lucky people, and all the rest are out? Thank you.
Here's Trina Allen, and then James Fago-Clark. And after Ms. Allen, we have five more speakers.
Good evening.
Um, viable housing is rent control, so I think you should agendize that. Hello, my name is Trina Allen, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento to demand a complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers shouldn't be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence on our community. Any action the city makes that uses our tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community that it serves. As a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. The training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips, and facilitated by experts in the field of training's curriculum. The training should conclude with a test of understanding, and the trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training. And as a proudly queer person, I'm far less concerned with colorful street toppers as I am with housing our queer and trans youth, as with protecting Black and Brown community members from state violence, as with providing rent control and affordable housing. Queer liberation has never, ever had anything to do with assimilating to a white supremacist, capitalistic, and homonormative agenda. Our history is radical and collectivist. You should know this, you should know your history.
My next speaker is James Fago-Clark and then Pastor Gainsborough.
Hello, once again, council. A couple of weeks ago, I asked about an audit, an audit on where all this money that you're putting into homelessness is actually going. I wanna know how much is being spent on law enforcement. I wanna know how much is being spent on administrative costs? How much is actually going into solving homelessness? Because last time we did one, seven, last time we did one, we found seven, $13 million, sorry, $13.2 million being spent in total on homelessness. Over half of that was on mitigation, which is police and cleanup. Which, also, if you notice in that video from last week, most of the camps were clean. The ones that had some trash, most of them had it in a pile where it could be easily disposed of. But the ones that people have been ran out of, is where all the messes seem to be. That might be a symbol of something, because when you get pushed out of someplace, you just grab what you can and go, and you leave everything else behind. So every time you push people out, you're adding, adding to, ah, sorry, actually adding to the litter problem. How much money are you spending to help increase that? That could be re, um, sorry, reallocated into funding trash cans for these areas, sanctioning campgrounds, where if you keep the area clean and don't create a problem, then we're not pushing you out until we actually have a place to send you. That'll make it easier for people to administer services, too, because then they can go and find that person again when they actually have the housing that's not happening fast enough. Maybe we could look at how we're actually spending these dollars, get an audit, so we know where this money is going, where we're wasting a lot of this money. Why is it that even though we just have this whole person care grant, there's a whole bunch of people being forced out onto the streets, straight out of the hospitals? I actually did, last week, have to give somebody, an older gentleman, a blanket because he came out of the hospital with nothing but a gown, a paper gown on an almost freezing night.
Time is up, Mr. Clark, please.
Where's that audit?
And then Frank Topping. Esther Gainsborough?
Can you enlarge that a little bit, please? This is a wonderful vision cast here, and I want to commend the mayor and the council for standing behind him to, on a plan to build a thousand tiny homes. Manny Piqueo in the Philippines built himself for the poor a thousand homes. I don't know how long it took, but I appreciate your aiming at two years to implement that. It's gonna take, it's gonna take like the Dunkirk evacuation of France, where we could have lost 300,000 troops and lost Britain and lost the entire continent. It's gonna take all the different means. I love your plan here in the upper right-hand corner of this article. It says, "Triple the space at the triage shelters, from 200 to 600 beds." That's a great plan, that's great thinking, that's leadership thinking. And so that if 200 people are connected with services and housing every 90 days, these shelters could serve 2,400 people. That's leadership thinking. And there's other, there's leadership thinking in all eight of you council section leaders. But it's beneath your dignity, it's beneath your humanity, for week after month now, over a year, to be talking about some type of public restrooms. San Francisco, it's beneath the spouses that you have, it's beneath the blessings that God has given you. It's beneath the common decency that you all, that you all model, to not have public restrooms out there. And Chavez, we can't be a destination city, item number, whatever it is on the agenda tonight, to be an NBA All-Star City. We can't be a destination world-class city and not have public restrooms.
This issue, by the way, will be back before the council in the month of March, okay? So stay tuned.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Our next...
Oh, the day yet.
God bless you. Let's get the restrooms out there along with homeless.
Our next speaker is Frank Topping, then Mac Worthy, and then Rick Stevenson.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council. First of all, I'd like to join Pastor here in thanking you for mentioning the thousand tiny cottages at State of the City address. Modular, can be easily moved, put where they need to be. I was on all three workshops of the MHSA reorganization, but it was raining Captain Doug's the night of the boat, and the Mental Health Services Act Program Director mentioned to Leslie Napper, who entered my vote by telephone, "Who's gonna tell Frank about Supervisor Kennedy and Darrell Steinberg showing up?" Oh my God, several people said that that night. I've been trying to get you over there for over a year, well over a year. I just left a statewide disability training on mental health and the fears of mental health consumers, people, other people with disabilities as well. Love being active. I do have a, I wanna say thank you for the gentleman, Jay and Rick, and Mayor Steinberg, for attending the events at Sierra Health Foundation recently. I will be...
Just another couple of seconds.
Okay, I will be getting back to you with an email, thank you. And you, Anthony.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. Topping.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Rick Stevenson is our final speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We, we have turmoil going on right back at the same place, the guns in America. I don't use language as other people use, or heavy hearts. I use the mind for things that happen in Florida, can't happen here. That's the reason I utilize my mind, because knowledge, put knowledge in motion, and that become wisdom. If you go to the Book of Solomon, you'll find some of that. It's critical, people. When we have to have law implemented with a gun in the hand, that's what you're saying. Let's go back to what was Lincoln's Civil War. If the white folks in the South had a gator's, black was gun, it had never been overrun, but it never. They didn't, because they didn't trust him. Average black man knew nothing about a rifle, he's on a shotgun. So, you know, if you talk and understand some things, you may get somewhere. And to put the blame on the FBI is a disgrace. Now, a white girl says she wants to blow up the White House. That went, nobody said a word. We want to accuse everything of malfeasance. Rudy Crew from here, who schooled this, down on that end, which was a friend of mine, plus a classmate of mine, had a son on the law enforcement down there. We keeps up with situation. My wife's art is advertised by a white woman's magazine in Florida. But we don't have a tendency to reach out and think and talk to people, because we don't have no experience or nothing, but nonprofit organizations. We gotta get above that, Dale, and a lot of that falls on your shoulders. You've got to change things here. And if you don't step up and change things, you get pretty nasty here. Because, see, these things here, what we going through here with what's going on, the backpacks, did they search all those backpacks? What did they find? Those are the things you should be putting on internet, because we have some situation here of reports on some items of people in the park that didn't get a clear report. Why does your policeman have to have a gun? Take the gun from the police and you see what will happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The last speaker is Rick Stevenson.
Yes, I brought copies of an article, hopefully was distributed to the council members and staff, of an article that I wrote a year ago, was published in Inside Publications titled Sacramento's Biggest Deadbeat. And what it referred to is the state of California that takes tens of millions of dollars of city services in Sacramento every year and pays absolutely nothing. And while there is no way for the city to force them to pay, it creates a chronic deficit, you know, to the city and the services that they have, that they can deliver to their citizens. And so I have a potential answer in there, and I would appreciate, appreciate it if the council members would consider doing something along that line after it was published. Several of you did get ahold of me, emails, that type of thing, and seemed to have interest and support in it. Shortly before I passed away, I talked to John Silva about it. He wanted to pursue it, but of course, since then, I don't believe anything has happened. And I just, as long as I was here, wanted to ask if the council would please ask staff to look into this very problem. It could be $30 million a year, it could be 60, it could be more. But until we have a study on it, we won't know what services the state takes and doesn't pay for. Thank you.
Very good. Of course, of course, the study would have to also look at the offset, the amount of money that people who work for the state from out of the city of Sacramento contribute, sales tax and otherwise, restaurants and lunch and all the things. So it's gotta be a fair study here. But we'll...
Absolutely.
Something to look at. Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the, that is the public testimony for items not on the agenda. I do wanna go back to the closed session report out here, make sure we...
Mayor, we have nothing to report.
Okay, well, I'm glad we went back to that. Appreciate it. Okay, as I understand it, now we go to the consent calendar, and item five is going to be postponed. Any idea when? Take a couple of weeks? I'll probably be able to work it out with the, with all the stakeholders. So if you're here to testify on item five, it is going to be continued for at least a couple of weeks. All right? Without objection. We also, I'd like to make sure that, well, we have public testimony for the consent item. How many, how many?
I have seven speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay, let's do that.
And I do have one item to read into the record. On item number two, section one of the ordinance will be amended to read by and between the city of Sacramento and R.R.J. Cambridge Partners LLC, a California limited liability company.
Okay.
So for the consent calendar, the first speaker is Mike Barnbaum, then Robert Copeland, both on item number one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Barnbaum, and I head the grassroots organization Ride Downtown 916. We favor the city's participation and support for a bid for the NBA All-Star Game to be held at Golden One Center in the year 2023. We feel that the five-year timeframe from now till 2023 will give the city and the region the ability to answer and resolve the hotel and conference room space issue that has been brought up. And it will also allow us to implement some initiatives to comply fully with Senate Bill 743. We will be participating at length with the Sacramento Regional Transit District to implement a route optimization study, and hope in the next five years to roll out a brand-new, robust bus network system in concert with regional transit. We will work with Yolo County Transportation District to continue with the service enhancements that have been implemented with their new downtown shuttle concept. We are working with Fairfield and Sassoon Transit, better known as FAST, to implement on July 1st, a route from Sacramento to the Pleasant Hill BART station through Fairfield. And we are working with San Joaquin Regional Transit District, the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, and the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority to implement some service enhancements that we feel in five years will fully comply with the provisions of Senate Bill 743.
Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate all your advocacy for the All-Star Game and for modern transportation.
They all go hand-in-hand. It's bigger than basketball.
Sure is. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland and then Fong.
What item?
Both on item number one.
I have a few questions about this. How much is it gonna bring Sacramento in tax revenue? And where would that tax revenue go? Would it go to help the homeless population? I don't think so. Are you gonna clear the homeless population out of downtown Sacramento during the NBA All-Star Game, if we do get it? Two, uh, three, what are you gonna do about traffic? Because it's gonna bring a lot of traffic in the downtown area. And as far as our bus system, I don't think it can handle all that traffic. Four, do we have any public restrooms outdoor by then? So people have to go to the restroom, go shopping, and all that? Have you, have you thought about all this? I don't think you have, to tell you the truth. Do we have enough hotel rooms already for the people that are gonna come to Sacramento? I don't think so. What are you gonna do about the blight areas in downtown, like on J Street between 10th and 11th? Most of them of that are empty businesses and all that, I mean, just a blight area. And will that, down on K Street by the arena, will it be ready by then, as slow as they're Well, I don't, I don't see Sacramento being ready for an All-Star Game yet.
So you're against it.
Get on the ball and prove Sacramento for everybody, not just the wealthy, not just the fans of the NBA, but for everybody. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fong on item one, and then Frank Topping on item one and 11.
I'm against it. So, I know you already made all your decisions before we even have this meeting, so let's not even pretend, okay? We're living in a very much a parallel world. You want a world-class city, you want the NBA to come to Sacramento. I, I don't know what the heck that is. I don't, I don't watch any TV or any of those things. But what I want you to understand is that there are women that are out there that doesn't have any access to the restroom. When they are on their menstrual cycle, they have nowhere to go to put on their tampons. Yes, this is the harsh reality here. You understand that, you know, people who have houses can't go into the restroom to change their tampons and their, their pads, their sanitary pads. Yeah, is this, is this something that you will censor? This is something that women have to deal with every month. We're living in a parallel world, and you, you sit up there thinking that this is okay to continue to coddle these rich people while women are out there, have no access to the public restroom, to even change their tampons. Get that through your head.
Next speaker is Frank Topping, and then Ardell Harrison.
Evening, again. On the NBA issue, I'd like to say that I am in favor of it. I realize what you're doing. It gives me a chance to mention, though, a lady that we just visited at Sierra Health Foundation, seeing how it's Black History Month. Her 501(c)(3) happens to get tickets from either the Golden One Center or the Kings, I'm not sure which. But it's one thing to be able to afford and have a ultra-low-income individual afford an outing. It's an entirely different thing, entirely different magnitude, when you give them 16 tickets and tell them to take the whole family out. You get into four generations going for an outing that would be impossible otherwise. This lady has given us over 500 tickets, given me over 500 tickets to give out for SHRA in our high-rise building. At one time, she gave me 90 tickets at one time. And I had to give them out between Sutter View and Sierra Vista. That's a lot of tickets. Like I said... Like I said, I realize what you're doing with the growth and everything and bringing the NBA in. Congratulations.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ardell Harrison on item number five. Since it was continued, you still wish to speak.
Continued for a couple of weeks. Okay.
Next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, and then McWorthy.
Which item, Pastor?
Pastor is speaking on item number 11.
11, okay.
We can get the, just enlarge it just a little bit. Thank you. So I am in favor of whatever a fire engine costs, and what a fire engine does, and what the SAC Fire does, and also what the SAC Police do. Last week, I was, I was upset, I was more upset last night. There was a lady that had no place to go, and I was watching the, the free dance of the pairs' Olympic skating, and it was just so exquisitely beautiful. But this lady said to me, as she went out into the night, I said, "Wouldn't the police at least give you a warm place to go so you don't freeze to death?" She said, "You're so condescending." She said, she said, "I, I wish I would freeze to death tonight." Last week, I had people chanting with me from the chamber here, "They're dying tonight. They're dying tonight." I don't have to have people join me to say, 112, that you were brave enough, Mayor Steinberg, to go to the memorial for them at the church in December. 112, that's two people dying every week. Yeah, the clock is running down, 22, 21. I wonder who's going to die tonight and go out into eternity? Who's, who's child, as long as it isn't yours or mine? Who's grandchild? And so I want to ask you, with the weather projected as freezing coming up, that you somehow reopen South Side Shelter when it's going to be below freezing, so nobody freezes to death in Sacramento? I believe you can do it. It needs to be done immediately. God bless you.
Last speaker on the consent calendar is Mac McWorthy, speaking on items number five through 15.
That was number, number five. You tabled five, and I had 15 on that, so when you table it, you know. But what I'm saying, the water meters, people, we didn't get the facts on water meters. And Dell, that's where you're dropping the ball at, too. Water meters were designed to price water and to measure water by cubic foot. One of my houses is by cubic foot, and the other house is by five bedrooms, five rooms. Now, that's the old-fashioned way. When I cross the street, got two houses, you get one bill. My place, you get two bills. Why, Dell? Because nobody really sit down and figured out. Engineers right here know that if you're going to send water through one pipe on a one meter, the commercial property that friends are have, they get cubic foot. Why did the residents have to go per room? Because you want to make more money. Tell the people the truth here. Somebody don't know what they're doing. Just like we had some kids here talk about the treatment center. Those kids didn't know anything about that. Somebody wrote that for them. You need to add to this. Ashley, the only one, had been over to the facility in Land Park on this panel here. Sue, why would you other people? She didn't know what she was looking at, but she went over there and walked it. So tell some people some truth of what's going on here. You should have had apprentices on these contracts. Where's the apprentices for this water meters? You still got some galvanized pipes sticking up, that water's still going through, and we got a new treatment center. This is part of the president's infrastructure funds. Are we going to be earmarked? I'm going to ask to be earmarked those funds, because you are using your bond money here, and then you expect to get infrastructure funds from the government. That's double tipping. You know, if you're going to bring it and pay off the bond debt, I can see that, but you're not. You're going to use that somewhere else. Understand that this thing got to go to a business, not a political status, to get jobs here. We need jobs here in Sacramento.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Right, that's, that's the public testimony. And I want to make a comment on item one, but Councilmember Magetta, did you have a comment on any of the items?
I was going to move the consent calendar with the changes read into the record, and obviously excluding item five.
Good. I just want to say that I am very supportive of the prospect of bringing the All-Star Game to Sacramento. And you know, so often in the chambers, and I don't think it's reflected as much out in the larger community, but it certainly gets reflected here, it's an either/or. We must both be a destination city, a cosmopolitan city, and assertively and aggressively address our homeless problem. We have to do both. And frankly, there's a bit of a relationship between the two in my view, because I'm convinced as someone that comes from sort of the old school, and you know, from my, my political leanings and my work in the legislature, as mayor of this city, I know one thing. If we don't grow a tax base in a very aggressive and assertive way, and create more high-wage jobs, we're not going to be able to afford all of the things we want to do and that we need to do. So I'm all for this All-Star Game, and the city's being asked to be a partner, not in a financial, significant financial way, but to be, but to be there in, in spirit, and to help out with a lot of the logistics to make this happen, including being aggressive about building more hotels and helping out with the room, with the room issues and transportation. This is a signature opportunity. It's going to highlight our city. It's going to highlight our region. And I think we've got a real good chance to get it. Thank you to the Kings for being here tonight as well. So let's, let's not get into this thing where it's, it's one or the other. The two go together, and that's the way we're going to, that's the way we're leading this city as a city council. That's the way we're going to continue to lead it. Okay, the consent calendar's been, we've got Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Ashby.
Mayor, I hate to go after you, because you're always so eloquent.
Well, don't.
I just wanted to add a couple of things to that. One is, yes, we want to see hotels built, but this is truly an opportunity with the NBA partnership and the Kings to put Sacramento on a platform. We have a beautiful city here. We have a great quality of life. We have a lot of amenities to show off, and this puts us on a national and international stage. So I know we're going to do everything we can in partnership to try to land the tournament, but I think it's a great thing, and I want to thank you, John, for being here tonight to be part of this moment.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, I just, too, wanted to comment on the All-Star bid. I think it was Jay and I that actually talked to Adam Silver when, on the opening night of the arena, about the All-Star bid. And not only have we done everything we need to do with Sacramento, but the team, the Kings, have put together some really creative proposals that I think would be fun, like bringing in boats that people could hang out on for cruise ships as hotel rooms to add to our capacity. I think those are great ideas. I think there's a lot of creative things, like Airbnb beds that could be used to help with our hotel room count. I think the team has put together a really terrific proposal, and I would take it just one step farther. It's not that I think we deserve to have the NBA acknowledge Sacramento as a basketball city. I think that the NBA would be quite fortunate to get to have their games in Sacramento. We have everything they need, including an award-winning arena that has won every single award that you can possibly win and exceeded every standard previously set for these types of facilities. So I think if the NBA wants to have a world-class event in their All-Star Game, they will choose Sacramento, and they have no reason not to. You guys have put together a terrific proposal. It's an easy yes for me, and I think a wonderful opportunity for the NBA to see the best of Sacramento.
Very good. Councilman Carr. Public testimony is done. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an easy yes for me as well, but it's more than just the All-Star Game. These things are events. They are happenings. It's a whole week of activities for people who aren't even going to the basketball game. When a major sports league has an event in your city, it's a happening. It will bring hundreds of thousands of people to this area to participate in the events that go on all day long. It will add to our TOT, which will help us build more than we are doing now. It will also help us with our sales tax, where we can support some of the initiatives that we'd like to support, that we don't have the money to support now. So it's kind of, we have to look at it from that perspective, as a big event that will highlight our city, that will go on for a whole week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carr. All right, the consent calendar, all in favor. There's a second by Councilmember Chenier.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Vice Mayor Hanson. Third, fourth, and fifth, okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Consent calendar with exception to item five, which has been continued, passes unanimously. Okay? Thank you very much. Jeff and John, thanks for coming tonight, guys.
And Mike.
And Mike, of course, Michael. I already thanked him. Okay, we now move to the, to the items agendized this evening. Excuse me, very, excuse me for the cough. Let us go to file item 16.
About 15?
15.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 15 was a consent.
You're correct.
So we'll move to...
I apologize.
That's okay. Move to item 16. Who's presenting on Marina Vista Housing Development Safety and Security Update? This is Nora Report, Ms. Dozier. Okay. Very good.
Okay, I have some overhead slides that I'll be putting up. But first of all, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm LaShelle Dozier, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I'm here to respond to your request from the January 30th meeting to look at ways to proactively ensure that safety and security measures are implemented for our residents at Marina Vista and Alder Grove Housing Community. This presentation will focus on some of the following items and include options with cost projections and funding resources that may require additional avenues or grants or some other opportunities to implement them in the community. So I'll be talking about the security, lighting, fencing, cameras, site cleanup, parking, residential, resident and social services, and also police services. In addition, I do have a member from the Police Department is here who is available to answer questions. Just as a matter of background, Marina Vista is one of our largest public housing sites, and it's situated on 34 acres. Alder Grove is also another one of our largest housing sites, and it is on 28 acres. Between the two housing developments, there are 751 housing units. They were both built in the early 1950s and are spread out over a very, very large campus. Just to give you some context in terms of the funding that we receive from the federal government each year, as I come before you during the budget presentations, one of the things I talk about is the fact that funding for public housing has always been decreasing. We currently receive $2.7 million each year to do our capital improvements for all of the units in the city. So that includes every single unit, and we have over 1,700 units in the city. And those, that 2.7 goes to deal with kind of our most essential things, like our roofs, HVAC systems, health and safety, all those types of things. So, so the first thing that we wanted to take a look at was our security. We currently have a security patrol, a private contractor, that patrols both our Marina Vista campus and our Alder Grove. We have decided that we need to replace that based on some of the things that have happened in the recent past. So we are working on bringing in another contractor immediately, who will work until we get an RFP out on the streets so that we can bring in a new service, security service. So we'll be changing that out, so, and adding additional patrols. Those particular patrols will have a vehicle license plate reading technology, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we're going to implement that in our particular communities. But we feel that that is a way that we can really get much more effective security and oversight. And then we're also looking at some of the new technology, which I'll also talk about, that may be used by the security contractor. We project that the ongoing cost for those improvements is about $130,000 annually over what we're currently providing, and those are funds that we will be able to pay for from our operating costs. Lighting, if you look at our campus, it's very, very large. We're looking at upgrading and replacing the various lights that we have. There are 183 pole lights and 75 wall-mounted lights. We're also looking at what would be the cost to add additional 50 new wall-mounted lights. So about a year ago, SHRA received a SEPTED crime prevention through environmental design analysis of the property, and this is how we arrived at what these lights should be. We also worked in conjunction with SMUD, and the Police Department, obviously, is the one that did the SEPTED. So the SMUD audit identified some of those improvements that could be made to the fixtures as well as rebates. So after we kind of take a look at, of the $950,000 is our projected cost, we may be able to get some rebates back from SMUD so that we can go about implementing some of the newer lights. In addition, there were some lights that were out, and since the January 30th timeframe, all of those lights have been, have been replaced. Then we wanted to take a look at kind of gates and fencing. If you look at just the campus at Marina Vista, there's approximately 3,100 linear feet of fencing that would be needed if we decided to put a fence around and then include vehicle gates. It would require three vehicle gates and kind of multiple pedestrian entrances, because, you know, the children also go back and forth between the school. So our projected cost for installation of that is about $575,000, and ongoing maintenance would be about $20,000. So another alternative that we also looked at, instead of, you know, gating and fencing, which would be very expensive, is what they call geo-fencing. So geo-fencing is a pilot program that really uses drone technology and provides a digital fence around the property. So essentially, you would have drones that would be operated by a technician during the timeframe that we feel is necessary, that could literally go over the site and go to wherever there was a particular issue if there was something going on. And then that particular technician would tie into our security patrol. So it kind of gives you this ability to review the campus through a drone technology at all times that you have it employed. So we felt that that was a pretty innovative and creative way to really look at it versus putting a physical fence that someone really wouldn't be able to tell if there was, if there was something going on or people were coming and going inappropriately. So that is one of the items that we costed out. It would be about $156,000 for one campus alone, and then there'd be some additional ongoing costs. What we would probably be looking at here is to pilot it during the three-month timeframe before our security patrol comes onboard, our new one, so that we could get a feel for exactly how that would operate. The other issue that we looked at was security cameras and installing state-of-the-art security throughout the entire campus. Given the way that at least our Marina Vista campus is what we focused on, there are 61 different buildings over the entire campus. So we could add additional security cameras. There currently is a camera there at the office, but not across the entire canvas. So we did have someone come out and do an analysis. It would require 68 high-performance cameras throughout the community to monitor the entire site, and it would look at vehicles, pedestrians, common areas, and all perimeter access points. This would make it easy for us to really share video access to our camera feed with the Police Department. However, because it requires using fire optic cabling, so you would have to do the trenching throughout the entire community, it would be quite expensive. Our projected cost would be about $1.4 million for equipment installation fees and all of the trenching. So it could be done in phases, obviously, but to get the entire campus outfitted with cameras and hardwired, it'd be $1.4 million, and $18,000 would be the ongoing cost. One of the other issues that also came up was about the site and the cleanup. Due to the site being an open campus, we experienced an unusual amount of dumping at the property around the dumpsters and by people who come from outside and dump furniture, mattresses, all kinds of different things. It's kind of, you know, a lot of illegal dumping comes on, comes on. In addition, some of the residents... on. In addition, some of the residents have also complained that, that some of the neighbors are part of the problem, you know, kids take the trash out, but they don't get it into the dumpster. So we sometimes have trash that's piling up around the dumpsters. So to help address this issue, we've already increased the number of pickups by our trash vendor, so they will have an additional pickup. And then we also will be working with our community to do some community cleanup and more education about really trying to make sure that the site stays as clean as possible. Every day, we have staff spend about two hours every day going out, picking up the trash that is located on that. So any assistance that we continue to have will give free up our staff to do a lot of the other things that they need to do. So we'll work on sending out letters to the residents regarding trash and site and pickup, and also giving us some assistance with unauthorized dumping at the office. The next one is talking about our parking. So we want to implement resident parking permits. Currently, it's, it's open in terms of where the parking is for both our residents as well as visitors, and our management staff really are the ones who have to go out and tag vehicles whether they're parked illegal or inoperable. So we are entering an agreement with the City of Sacramento Parking Services Division to enhance our parking enforcement at the site, which will really help to significantly address this issue. All residents will be issued a permit parking, and we will then designate specific spaces for visitor parking. We hope that this, well, we plan that this will be done within about thirty to sixty days, and this will help us start to get a handle on the parking situation and tagging those cars that really should not be there and are illegally parked. So we'll do the additional signage and all of the work associated with that, so it's about ten-thousand dollars. So our resident services, these are the programs that we have for both our Marina Vista and Alder Grove, and we have a full range of enrichment programs and social services that are provided by the agency, as well as all of the partners that we work with. We have a lot of partners who work on soft skills, job training, educational services, case management, childcare, financial literacy, access to healthcare at the clinic in the community, and a host of other services onsite at both of our developments. Under those particular programs, some of those community partners that we work with is SETA, the Greater Sacramento Urban League, Sacramento County Department of Human Assistance, Grid Alternatives, Valley Vision, Sacramento City College, Highlands Charter College, ACE Youth Mentoring, City Church, Sacramento Regional Conservation Corps, WEVE, and, as I mentioned, Elica is the Health Center. So they provide a wide range of services for all of our residents. I can go into more detail if you have questions about that. But we have really worked and focused to enhance the amount of social services that we can bring onsite to assist our residents as they continue their moves towards self-sufficiency. And the next one. So the Police Department. So we worked very closely with the Police Department for many years to provide services at our communities, and there's been an immediate response to help address safety and security after these issues have been brought up. The department has installed three pods, one most recently on Fifth Street in the vicinity of the developments. The beat officers have maintained a strong presence in the area, and specialty units are proactively making enforcement stops. Also, two beat officers are involved with our ACE mentoring program that we have for young men. They come out and actually participate in some of those sessions. And then also too, I think the issue came up about pop officers, and the chief was telling us that once the department is at full strength, they're going to evaluate, you know, where the pop officers actually will be located within the various communities. So those are kind of the big overview of all of the different safety and security measures. Like, I know some of these things are specific to Marina Vista, but we also looked at things and we're working on stuff at Alder Grove. Traffic calming was a huge issue in terms of the response we see, received from residents that cars are going through there much too quickly. So we're looking at either humps, lumps, or bumps. I think those are all the different terminology, to see if those are appropriate, to really try and slow down the traffic and do more traffic calming. So I will pause there and see if you have any questions for me at this particular time.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to the District Councilmember Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. LaShelle, thank you for coming. I wanted to address some of your points. I know we have a lot of people in the audience, some signed up to speak and some who haven't. So I thought I'd bring us back for a second to why this is here. Just a few weeks ago, we had a shooting on site between two potentially rival gangs, and those people didn't live on the site, but they brought violence to the site. And one person died, the other was seriously injured. But this is something that, over the last couple of years, we've seen repeated incidents, and when we look at the, the levels of crime in the community, we see a pattern emerging, emerging, emerging. And I want to thank Chief Hahn and Captain Buckley for coming to the community meeting we held on the fifth, where we had a great turnout from residents. And, and one of the things that we said to them, and I, and I believe that we mean, is that they are our responsibility, the people who live at Marina Vista and Alder Grove, these are city housing authority assets. The seven-hundred-and-fifty-one units are the largest public housing site in the entire region, right next to each other. And we, for too long, and I know we've aspired to transform those communities, to redevelop those communities, and maintain the public housing and, and rebuild it so it's a better quality, but we, we have these sites. The things we heard from the community were pretty straightforward, but one of the things I, I wanted to share with my colleagues, because you weren't all able to be there, and I know, thank you, Howard, for coming, our city manager, the mayor was sick, but we heard pretty passionately from some of the, yeah, Matt, why don't you put those up? This is Matt Reed from my staff. We heard from the school that the kindergarteners who weren't prompted to, to talk about what was going on in the community, they drew pictures like this when they were doing a Martin Luther King Day exercise, what they wanted their community to be like. They didn't want violence, they didn't want drugs, they didn't want a lot of different things. And so we have a deeper challenge here, and I appreciate talking about the security, the cameras, and the lighting, because those were things that the community talked about. But I also want us to think about how we transform the opportunity that these residents have to, to see that we care about them, to see that we do accept responsibility as a city council for these assets which belong to us through the housing authority that SHRA manages, but also that this is an opportunity to really partner with the residents, our community partners, which there are many, Mercy Housing, the, the America Volunteers Onsite, Roberts Family Community Development Center, the Urban League, and, and others in addition, to really begin to address some of the deeper roots of this. But I do think the things that were asked for, and Mr. City Manager, I know we talked about traffic calming, because that was an issue for the Alder Grove residents. I would like Public Works to also work with SHRA on the LED lighting replacement. We're doing that all over the city. We found a way to pay back our costs through the more efficient lighting, because I, I don't think SMD alone can do for us what we need to do. I, I'd like us to focus in, too, on this issue of safety. I think we may have overshot the mark with sixty-eight cameras just on the Marina Vista site, but I think there is some lower hanging fruit with at least the entrances and exits, so the residents know when something bad happens, that we're going to be able to figure out who did it and address it quickly. And that empowers not only our residents, but our Police Department. But the bigger opportunity comes with creating a bond between the community and the city that we can validate through, I think, the, the pop program, and Ben Gomez sits in the lobby, many of you know him as a former pop officer, he worked at the site. He, he knows, just like a lot of us do, that that program really did transform that community in a very positive way, and we've talked about bringing that back over time. And I know the chief, the night of the meeting, expressed interest in bringing it back, but we've got to get our staffing levels up. But those are the kind of things that built a bond between the residents and the community, but ultimately, you know, investing. And, well, we, we don't have a ton of resources to invest in new programs. We have been investing through some very important programs like the Black Child Legacy Campaign, our, our gang initiative, which Councilmember Jennings has really championed, and we have other opportunities as well through the school district. I spoke to the superintendent after hearing the stories from the principal and some, from some of the teachers, including some of the things you saw here. And the superintendent in Fresno served on the Housing Authority Advisory Board as an assistant superintendent, and they created a MOU between the district and the authority that helped the school district provide more services and better integrate with the housing authority. So I'd ask you to look into that, LaShelle. And then finally, it's the kids, and, you know, Mayor, you, you've hit this repeatedly. It's, the kids are our future, and when they're drawing pictures like we see before us, we have a real challenge to the future of our community if, if these kids are so traumatized. So with the one-time funds that we were given for youth programming in the last budget, I'm going to be dedicating about thirty-thousand of those funds to various initiatives onsite, including the STEM Camp, Roberts Family Development Center has a dance program, Street Soccer USA, and some other neighborhood initiatives to really build the community up. That's one-time funds, we don't get to do that again. But council, when we have Marina Vista, Alder Grove in front of us, sometimes we want to think that it's just LaShelle's responsibility, and she is the head of our housing authority, but we own these sites. They're ultimately our responsibility as a council, and we have to do everything we can. And so I want to thank you for coming out. I'd like to, to continue to work with the agency on both sites, Alder Grove and Marina Vista, to make sure that we're partnering effectively between the city and your staff, and you do have some great staff. And then the community, I see member, I see residents here tonight who I, I don't think signed up to speak, but, but I want you to hear very clearly that when we said we were going to help, we didn't mean it just for that one night. We meant it ongoing, and we want to show you that these past promises that haven't been fulfilled, that that's no longer what we're going to do. We're going to make progress. It won't be all overnight, but it's going to happen, and we're going to need your help.
Vice Mayor, can I just want to add, thank you for your, your very appropriate comments and for really putting your heart into this, because it would be easy to take a single incident and try to remedy it. And some of these recommendations, of course, that Ms. Dozier put forward are very, very important, but what you're really saying is that we all owe it to dive in all the way, to try to help the community. And I, I do think that there's one piece that, I would say that it's missing, because there's certainly not missing, but where we, I think, need to do a better job working together, and that is with the school district. Because when you really think about, I, I went and visited the Lea Tata Floyd School, and the truth of the matter is, it is an economically segregated school. I mean, it begs a lot of questions. Why should everybody from the low-income area be segregated in the same school? You've got Cracker Riverside, you've got other schools around there, and so these young people, these children, it's not that they don't learn or can't learn, it's a dedicated group of, of administrators and teachers there. But this begs some deeper questions, you know, sort of like the McClatchy situation that I know has been the subject of a great deal of conversation in the community, and a community meeting tomorrow at McClatchy, that there are deeper issues, as you suggest, Vice Mayor, that need to be discussed and addressed here about economic segregation. And if we allow enclaves to continue, well-intended, all the fixes, all, but we, we don't allow people from different economic backgrounds to go to school together, to live together in our neighborhoods, then we aren't really addressing the core of the issue here. And I think that's part of what you were, part of what you were suggesting as well. I, I know, I want to, and I'm working with Jesse Ryan, the school board president, we want to do a joint meeting with the city-school district, and I know there, we have other districts as well, and we'll make sure that we don't leave anybody out, whether we do it all at once or over time. But I want this issue of poverty and how the city and the school district work together, and this ought to be our target. This is a perfect target. So you've started a really important conversation here with the community. The housing authority is a big piece of it, no question, but it is bigger and broader, and we've got to get to that root, right?
Mayor, can I just add to that first? I think you're absolutely right, and we've talked about the segregation before here at the council. I didn't bring it up, but if you look at the census data, it's clear that we have economically segregated, but also a racially concentrated island of poverty.
It's racially concentrated, yes.
Poverty here. And in the end, we're only going to break that down by busting through some of the invisible walls. But the biggest thing I want people to know is that those residents there, they're not alone. And, and, and that, we, we see them and we hear them, and we want to partner with them to improve their community, because they are good people. And a lot of folks don't know them, and there's sometimes postings on Nextdoor and Facebook that malign them. But this is an opportunity to build bridges and to break down some of those invisible walls that separate the community. And in the end, too, we have a great opportunity. We're investing a lot of city resources into building the new urban farm and community garden at Lea Tata Floyd, and so we'll be investing a lot of money on the school site. And I think those are, those are perfect comments to sort of continue to drive at this.
Make this part of our agenda with the city-school district when we meet later in 2018. Let's, I know, Councilmember Jennings is up. Do you mind if we take the public testimony, and then we'll go back to the council? Is that okay? Okay.
Yeah, I have six speakers on the side, and the first one is Dan Hood, then Lori Stetson.
Can you take my name off so I can punch out? You have me as the current speaker.
I didn't clear the queue. Sorry. Okay.
Dan Hood?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Dan Hood. I've lived in Alkali Flat and Upper Land Park for about thirty years. Both areas have high concentrations of public housing, so I'm very familiar with what's going on in those areas. I also volunteered two years on the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, which was supposed to result in a transformation of the Alder Grove Marina Vista projects, but I guess that has stalled at this point. And, you know, I wrote down a bunch of things that I wanted to say that I didn't think you would all say, but you hit all the points, and I commend you for all of those comments, you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor. So just let me underscore a couple of things is, when I hear the proposals to, we have to address crime, there's no doubt about that. Crime has been creeping back in to especially Marina, Marina Vista, and just to underscore the effect on the children, we've been seeing that all summer last, last year, in the kind of behavior of the school-aged children, certain things that make you question, where is it coming from? And it's got to be coming from some, some very bad role modeling over there in the projects. We, ultimately, this resulted in some kind of alleged gang activity last month. And we didn't really solve crime back in the nineties when we had the huge gang problems. We solved it with positive role modeling, which was the pop officers. So I'd like to underscore that we do want those, that positive role modeling back. If it comes with the pop officers, that would be great, but there are lots of other ways to do that. I think, just real quickly, one of the main problems over in the projects is the public housing model is, is ancient, and we need to have a new model. HUD is not addressing the long-term affordable housing, also known as shared equity. We need to really consider shared equity to address the poverty and some of the other issues over there.
Thank you, Mr. Hood, for participating and continuing to be an intelligent voice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lori Stetson, and then Art Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Lori Stetson with Upper Land Park Neighbors. I agree with everything you've said. I'm happy to hear LaShelle update us on what's been going on. We, we, Upper Land Park neighbors have been meeting with SHRA, the police, and also working with the residents through their committees on trying to find ways to bridge the communities. We know if the housing projects aren't safe, our neighborhood isn't safe. We want the whole community to be safe. Our priorities have been parking enforcement, lighting, and license plate readers to, to try to hone in on some of the crime that's coming in from outside the area. There has been finger-pointing to people that live within the projects, but I know people that live there. people that live there, and they want a safe neighborhood. And in fact, last week on Nextdoor, one of the resident's son's car had all wheels stolen, and she felt there was no security within their area. So we would like to see a stronger security quickly. We'd also like to see pop officers come, come back. We supported them when they were there. We help support events with the kids. And we want to commend the mayor for raising some of the elephants in the room, because it is an isolated, economically depressed area, and it needs to be opened up, and we support that. We want to see all economic incomes integrated in the area, and if the transition plan comes forward in the future, we would like to see more market rate interspersed within the affordable housing. So thank you very much, and thank you, LaShelle, for moving forward with your activities. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Art Taylor, then McWorthy, and then Carl Hubert.
Okay, we have overhead? Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Ms. Dozier. I'm here to talk a little bit about what's been happening in Alder Grove, Marina Vista, but also in the Dose, the Twin Rivers. And first of all, I want to notice that crime, as what's been discussed here recently, is three times greater within a half-mile radius of Alder Grove, Marina Vista than out of that half-mile radius. We've had crimes that have been noted. We've had two recent chases going into the projects as far as car, car thefts, and recently we had the triple homicide 2016. There's a number of people that live or tenants that are in Alder Grove that will testify, but they can't, because they'll be labeled as a snitch or a rat and face retaliation. Next, want to talk a little bit about redevelopment, which was supposed to eliminate blight. And in some cases, and I believe here in Alder Grove, it's persistent as far as taking a lot of money away from the taxpayers. Transparency statement. SHRA has a transparency statement that they've posted, and I've asked them, please, can you give Land Park Community Association a tour, a guided tour, for the board members? I had three emails, plus an email to General Manager Mark Hamilton, and never received a response. I note, as far as some recommendations or suggestions, we need to return the problem-oriented policing, we need shot spotters, we need license plate readers, and I recommend that the 751 units be sold and developed.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Taylor. Your time is up.
Thank you for market rate housing. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is McWorthy, then Carl Hubert, and then Frank Topping.
And I did see some of our residents from Marina Vista and Alder Grove show up. I know that the, we got to this item a little bit earlier, so if, if you do want a chance to say anything, please submit your comments. It'll be up to the, the mayor whether or not we can take them, but we're going to try. Go ahead, Mac.
What we're saying here, we, we see a welfare mentality being taught through public housing. I thought we were going to get away from that. Then we see things here, we want surveillances, we want surveillance cameras, that much money in surveillance cameras? How many people over there? How many police calls you got with real police calls that we can go to the police and say, well, these calls were facts instead of fake calls? Then we got people, be careful who want to be a, a road marshal, your babies. Be careful, people, who want to be a road marshal, your babies that don't have no babies. A dangerous zone. Those are the zones that brings on, what we have here is illegal prostitution, because you don't know who around your baby. A daycare, that's when the thing over there with Adele Robinson people come in here. Get the welfare department out and go to housing, and you will get housing. Job, how many people have been put on jobs as you train over there? That's what statistics show, but ain't no statistics show. I've been to a couple of those meetings. Last one I was at was over there near McClatchy, where nobody that lives in the compound was at the meeting. Dorsey Reels, only one person came in here that was lived at Dorsey Reels when you went on and decided to tear Dorsey Reels down. What part is United States Government playing here? We don't hear nothing from HUD. We don't hear nothing from HUD's decision here. We don't know whether HUD sold you that property. A HUD still got their hand in the pot, too. Tell the people the truth. That's all you got to do. And we know where you're going. We need job people. If you get welfare out of the house and get these people jobs, they'll go out and buy them some houses. Everywhere you got, you have a police department, you don't have to, people. These people will come out there, how are they going to live in another neighborhood and they've been used to being, oh, police, you can't say that. Speak your mind. Deal with the police department direct in their face, and you will get some of this crime solved, instead of lying between people.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Carl Hubert, then Frank Topping, and Jennifer Caldwell.
Carl, come on down. Okay. Frank, Frank Topping, you're up next.
And then Jennifer Caldwell is our final speaker.
Finally, I get to address my councilman or something, and it's
Welcome, Frank.
in your district. SHRA, Marina Vista. I'm a resident of SHRA Sutterby, and wildly in favor of it. The people sure deserve the best, now and there. The only thing I would like to suggest, please don't use the same contractors or architects as used on the remodel of Sutterby and Sierra Vista. The restrooms on the same timer as the community room caused all kinds of problems about a week ago with a lady whose bathroom plugged up, and she needed to go to the restroom in the middle of the night while they were working on her bathroom. But also, one of the people who pack our goods came out of the elevator screaming, I'll never work on another one of these ghetto projects again. It's some kind of oversight has yet to be turned up on those people. I signed up for Item 1 and Item 11, but I forgot to mention
We're past those. I'm sorry.
Forgot to mention Item 11. I came out of the stand-down at Camp Pollock, feet-first in Engine 14. Wildly in favor of that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Topping. Our final speaker.
Here's Jennifer Caldwell. Jennifer Caldwell.
Jennifer, welcome.
Evening, Councilman. SHRA, I just had a few things to say. I'm a resident of Marina Vista. I've been there about 10 years. Not to say that any community doesn't have its own crime. To me, I think crime doesn't discriminate. It doesn't matter how much money you have, and it's, as I look on Nextdoor, because I have the app, I think it's quite the contrary, that they want to come to our meetings, but I've never seen them. I sit on the board, I'm there every weekend, I'm on the property every weekend, and the only thing I see is people driving by, taking pictures. To me, that's making fun of my hardship. And as every resident over there is given the opportunity, as with Jobs Plus, as a resident training program, as caretaker for the property, there is opportunities. I just think that colds mouth doesn't get fed, and if they're not taken to the water, I can't make them drink. Everybody there deserves an opportunity, regardless of where I live at. I live smack in the middle of fabulous homes that's right down the street, gorgeous homes that were just made there, and yeah, I might still be right there, but that's my home. And I take offense to somebody that feels that because I'm low-income, my child doesn't deserve the best education, or as many years as I tried to get my son into Crocker because of the educational system there at Lea Tata Floyd, I was looked down upon because I lived there. So one thing I just wanted to get out there is that I'm, I'm proud to live at Marina Vista. I work for SHRA, and I don't plan on moving anytime soon. I'm grateful for everything that the agency has done for me. So I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you for having my time.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. That, that's it for the people who signed up to speak on public comment. Mr. Carr.
The crime problem. Is it trending up or trending down? Is it staying even? And what's the number-one cause for service?
Very much for your question. So I brought some
This is Captain Buckley. She's our phenomenal South Area Captain.
I am. Thank you very much for that.
You are phenomenal, yes.
Thank you so much. I brought some crime statistics for you, and what I'll refer to first, Councilmember Carr, is homicide rates in both properties, and we split them up separately just to give you a better idea of where we're at. So in 2013, we did not have any homicides at either property. In 2014, we had zero homicides at Alder Grove. We had one in Marina Vista. 2015, we flip-flopped those numbers. We had zero homicides in Alder Grove, one in Marina Vista. In 2016, the numbers were fairly high, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting. We had a triple homicide that was domestic violence-related, and it involved family members. So there were three homicides in the Alder Grove area and none in Marina Vista. 2017, we had zero homicides, and as of this date, we've had one homicide this year, and that occurred on January 26th. And just to reiterate comments that were made previously, neither of our victims were residents of the SHR property, but they did have connections within the property, and that they were there visiting on-site. One, of course, is deceased, and the other was seriously injured.
And so what's the number-one call for service?
We get a fair amount of family disturbances. Most recently, we've had three calls within the last couple of weeks, all of which were relatively unfounded. Fair amount of missing persons calls, particularly at-risk juveniles. Again, family disturbances, domestic violence calls, and occasional assault calls, but for the most part, our calls for service have not been terribly high.
Okay. That's about HUD's running in our apartment complexes, that murders seem to be committed by people who know each other or know of each other, and very difficult to combat that. But the number-one call for service in my high-density complexes are domestic violence. And, but that doesn't mean that there are things that we can't do. We've seen this problem before, it's in a place called Franklin Villa, and the problem got cleaned up by doing a lot of things. One is a very good onsite resident services, that brought the kids in, got them involved in after-school programs. Luckily, we were in a SAC City Unified School District area. They do after-school programs, whereas Elk Grove, that serves half of my district, doesn't. No onsite after-school. So being able to work with the school district was one thing. Second, we're still putting up cameras in Phoenix Park. Every time that there's another dollar, we put up another camera. So we're able to have an extensive view of the whole complex, what's going on 24 hours a day, and we can go back and rewind and recreate what's happened if an incident goes down. But one of the things that we did, and I see you're trying to duplicate what, what you did in Phoenix Park for the most part, when that program was initially established, residents were required to do some things. They were required to either participate in their education of their kids, they were required, if they didn't do that, to participate in the community, neighborhood associations. There was one other thing, I think it was work on the education or something like that. Are we requiring the residents in these complexes to do that? And is that allowable?
It's not a requirement, but it is something that we are doing a lot of outreach, especially through our Jobs Plus program. We have resident ambassadors who essentially are going out, knocking on doors, putting out flyers, and really trying to get the word out and encourage much more participation in a lot of the social service-type programs that we have. So you're right, it is kind of starting from the model that we know really works, but obviously with not the same level of resources that we had to do Phoenix Park.
Yeah. Well, I for one believe that the way we were able to turn around Parkway Middle Elementary School was by having parent participation, and we could require parent participation because people were living in the houses that SHRA controlled. I think you should give that some serious consideration, if you think that that was one of the reasons that the complex turned around, which I do. And, and then the, as you know, the number-one call for service is always domestic violence in these complexes, and that's a simple matter of case management. We have the resources available with the county to address it. We just have to identify the houses where it's happening, but before we can do that, we got to bring the kids in, so the kids will tell us and then get the parents involved. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to take this time to thank Captain Buckley and the folks at the Sacramento Police Department for all the work that you've done with, on the community. I know in my district, where we did a lot of outreach with our police officers, community members, we were able to solve a lot of the, the crime issues that we were seeing there. And I think that just goes to show that it's that relationship that we're building with the community and law enforcement, that I, I'm confident you guys are going to do great work down in Marina Vista to really make some change, and I've seen it personally in our own neighborhood down in, off of Stockton Boulevard in the South Area. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Jennings.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Just, just a quick comment from the social service programs. Do you feel that you have all the resources that you need now? And if the case, if you say no, what would be the top additional services that you need to bring to the locations?
Well, there are quite a few social service, the partners that I mentioned are bringing a lot of resources to the table. So we've been very aggressive in terms of adult education, because that's one of the huge barriers we see that a lot of our residents have. So that's why we brought on Highlands Charter Community School. So we're having high school classes on-site. We've also worked, reached out to SAC City. They are going to actually bring two classes on-site. One is kind of transitioning to college, also assistance with passing that math exam. We're seeing that that's an issue. So the educational piece, I think, is really strong. I think it's, in terms of social services, if there is an area that needs more focus, is the nexus that the mayor mentioned in terms of working very closely with the school district to really address kind of the elephants in the room that he talked about, so that we really could have some huge paradigm shifts in terms of the education for the children. Currently, Lea Tata Floyd, if our development weren't there, that school would have, would not be there. I mean, it is served by just the residents from our housing complex, and you don't see that anywhere else in the city, where one low-income housing complex is serving an entire school site. So to me, that would be the area, from a social service perspective, that we need to have more focus. We also do, just to mention, we have we, they are there, and they help assist with domestic violence and things of that nature as well. But if there were one thing I would point out, it would be that nexus in connection with the school district to assist the kids.
So the after-school programs are currently going on at the school and also on the location, and the question that most parents ask me is, there's a waiting list and they can't get their kids in. Do we have the same situation here?
I'm not aware that there's a waiting list for the after-school program, but the after-school program is at the school.
So we've extended the learning day to 6:00 every day for kids to be able to, to go through the after-school program and get the academic support they need, as well as other things? And there's, there's enough capacity for the kids that need it?
I would have to
The parents back there.
Is there a waiting list?
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, do you want to?
Is there a waiting list? Ashley?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm sorry, there's a very long waiting list.
Okay. So therein lies another opportunity, and we, we find this to be the case in, in most schools, because, you know, there is a capacity issue. Teachers maybe don't want to give up their rooms, whatever the case may be, but if there's space on, in the locations, you can do an after-school program there at the location. You can also do it at the school if, if they have the capacity to do more. But my whole point being is, is if you identify these areas that you need additional assistance... additional assistance, I would be willing to work to bring additional resources there through nonprofits that are currently there and can extend their services beyond what they're doing right now, and also organizations that are not there to come and provide services. And I'm not, you know, most nonprofits are looking for additional dollars to do this. I think we have a crisis, and we want to be able to bring other organizations there that can provide services and just know that they're doing the right thing for the community at this point in time. And so if that's an opportunity, I'd love to have that conversation and be able to extend to ask other organizations to come there to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Since I didn't get to, I gave a little bit of an overview before some of you got here. I do want to ask Hector, if you don't mind, just thank you, Captain. And I know you have more information. Mr. Carr, on the heat maps, I don't know if you have those with you?
I don't, but I can most certainly email them.
Why don't you send those to Councilmember Carr? They do show some of the crime stuff. But Hector, before we move on, I just wanted to ask you real quick about a couple items that came up related to Public Works. One is just the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. If we wanted to look at Mirror and Fifth for NTMP planning, how long does that take to sort of program and then turn around?
You know, generally, when we're looking at a traffic calming program, we're talking about a larger neighborhood. If you're looking at just Fifth Street.
Your way and potentially to help in Alder Grove on our city site there?
Right. So there's a couple of ways we can do this. One is an expedited traffic calming plan, where we can come up with some concepts that we would like to share with the community and also your office. That's a little quicker than the traditional traffic calming plan, where it's more of a community-engaged process that takes a little bit longer. I would recommend in this case, if we know the specific streets that we're talking about, we could probably develop a plan within a month.
Okay.
Kind of a draft plan.
And then we could take that to the community and talk to them about it?
Right.
Okay. And then the other big question, so let's try to do that as part of the pull-through. On the streetlight issue, I know that SHRA talked to S-MUD, but I know we're going through a lot of conversion of streetlights to LED.
Right.
And upgrading them. Is it possible that we could incorporate these sites into our planning and come up with a much cheaper way to facilitate the transition of those lights?
Yeah, we're happy to take a look at those. Yeah. And so there's a couple of different ways, again, to do it. It could be like a specific project. I'm not familiar with all the various streetlights that are within the neighborhood and whether or not they're just standard.
The hodgepodge.
Yeah. Okay. Those may take a little bit longer, but we can definitely scope a project within that neighborhood to replace this.
LaShelle, will you work with Hector on coming up with a plan there? And it might take a little bit longer, but I know you've got a crack team, so.
Sure.
I know this wasn't an action item. I don't see anyone else punch up to speak. LaShelle, let's continue to work with the community, the various city departments and your staff to satisfy the community's interest. Thank you all. Madam Clerk?
I do have some board and commission appointments to read into the record this evening. The first is the Anne Land and Bertha Henshaw Memorial Funds Commission, and the appointee is Lori McIntosh. And to the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission is L. Stephen Winlock and Louis Vismarra.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now it's time for council comments, ideas, questions. First, we have Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have a couple of announcements. First one is the long-awaited groundbreaking ceremony for the new grocery outlet on Del Paso Boulevard will take place March 1st at 11:00 a.m. 4,200 Del Paso Boulevard, right on the corner, near the corner of Del Paso in El Camino. So we want to encourage our residents and interested parties to come out.
That's great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a big deal.
It's a big deal, isn't it?
The food desert, right?
It was. That's right. This is our second newer grocery store, so it is a big deal. And then, secondly, I want to welcome all to come out. Councilman Harris and myself will be hosting a winter triage shelter mid-season update and community meeting. It will be held actually in District 2, but it'll be District 2 and District 3, having a lively discussion about the statistics and a comprehensive update on the winter triage shelter. It'll be held Thursday as well, March 1st at 6:30 p.m. We're intending it to last until 8:00 p.m. The meeting location is the Artisan Theater at 1901 Del Paso Boulevard. So hopefully, in fact, I'm sure we're going to have a huge turnout. And I would especially like to invite our distinguished newspaper reporter, Ryan Lilis. I had mentioned to him that I would follow up and give him the date. So Ryan, if you're listening, I will hope to see you at the meeting on the 1st. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Gueda?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I wanted to, one, put a couple of things out there. The Family Unification, Education, and Legal Services Network, the FEW Network, will be having a teach-in tomorrow, Wednesday, February 21st, at 1:30 p.m. at SEU 1000 at 1325 S Street. It'll be a panel of legal experts discussing the safe haven issues and the immigration issues that the city has taken on, and an update on the efforts that we've done to help our local neighborhood residents who, in this time of crisis, with the federal immigration system. Also, it'll be a time to answer any questions about our city's positioning and stance due to our position on the president's recent actions. But most importantly, it's an opportunity to get information about how to access legal services and get the right legal advice if you have questions about your legal status. We will be joined by a number of faith-based leaders and community organizations who are here to help out all our brothers and sisters in Sacramento who are concerned. Mr. Mayor, yes. Oh, and Mr. Mayor's going to be there, too. Yes. Yeah. Thank you for your support with that. Also, later that day, at 6:00, the City of Sacramento will be holding Project Prosper over at the Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative. The mayor, Councilmember Chenier, the city manager and myself will be starting one of the first of three Sacramento-wide meetings to discuss on how do we improve our neighborhoods, what are the things we need to do to advance our city. And I believe there's going to be some polling and community opportunities to discuss, and small group conversations to discuss how we can move our city forward. Mark your calendars for March 10th. It's the annual College Glen Little League Parade. This is a real fun one. And we'll make sure the mayor goes out there to District 6 to the Old Fashioned Parade. We had a good time last year. 8:00 a.m., and we start at the Rayleigh Shopping Center on Folsom Boulevard. And then we parade on through College Greens into Glenbrook, onto Glenbrook Park for a wonderful day on the green.
Go Giants!
That's right. Go Giants. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll see you, everyone, tomorrow and up ahead.
Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. We had our Governance Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting on Monday, the 16th. We had a full house. Councilmember Harris and Jennings were there. We had a representative from the city manager's office. A city attorney was there, as well as our city clerk, as well as our internal auditor, and a group of people from UC Davis who were wondering what world we were doing there. We finalized our comments on treatment of staff policy that we want to bring forward as a one-off. But before we can do that, we have to get a full legal review, as well as give the city clerk the opportunity to go back through all the previous ordinances to see if we're conflicting with anything. We started work on our policies for charter officers to make sure that we know exactly what they will be evaluated on. And we're making good progress on that. We plan to start working on that at the next meeting, as well as looking at some of our ends policies. The mayor has asked us to consider a council retreat or a council workshop once we get further along the road on the ends policies, to bring the whole council in to the development of the wording of those. Councilmember Harris and Jennings, did I leave out anything? If it is, that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that the Natomas Community Association meets tomorrow night, Wednesday, February 22nd, 6:00 p.m. at the South Natomas Community Center, which is 2921 Truxell Road. And speaking of the community center, this last Saturday, we kicked off the South Natomas Urban Greening Program, which is an ambitious endeavor to plant 1,000 trees in the South Natomas Gardenland North Gate neighborhoods. It's a great program. We put a couple of trees in there by the community center, so two down and 998 to go. And we will achieve that goal over time, and paid for by a mitigation fund from our tree ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago. And lastly, I'd like to sort of build on what Councilmember Warren said. We're also looking to have a meeting on, a follow-up on the triage center and its efficacy and what we've learned and where we're going. We will probably pull together another meeting in the Gardenland North Gate neighborhood. Time to be announced at a later date.
Very good. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several announcements. First, starting off with, please join your neighbors, Mayor Steinberg, myself, at a meeting on Project Prosper, which will take place this Thursday, February 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Barclay Cavernar Golf Course. Now, we won't be playing golf. We'll be there to talk about how Sacramento can grow and get your feedback on how to help the city take action on a broad range of topics to improve the community economic prosperity and empower residents to nurture healthier and more vibrant neighborhoods. So we invite you to come out to that on this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then on Friday, the 23rd, the District 7 Hot Spots will take place, and that'll be at the School of Engineering and Science from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. This is a cool spot for teens to hang out. We look for teens aged 13 through 19 for basketball, snacks, and lots more activities. It's a safe environment. It's paid for by Measure U and sponsored by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Then we'll come back to the 24th and 25th, the Lunar Flower Fest and Tet Festival. It's going to take place at Hong Kong Plaza, which is located at 4562 Mack Road. And we encourage you to come out there. They have a lot of great activities, shopping, food, just all kinds of cultural traditions that you would love to get involved in. So we want you to go out there on Saturday and Sunday. And then also on Saturday, the 24th, if you're interested in tracing your African-American roots in honor of Black History Month, it's going to take place at the Robbie Waters Library, located in Greenhaven Pocket, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. This will be an opportunity for you to discover who came before you and meet genealogist Karen Bernie. And she'll teach you how to trace your family tree. And then finally, on Saturday, well, not finally, I've got two more. Saturday, March 3, at the Robbie Waters Library at 10:00 a.m., we'll be celebrating the Dr. Seuss birthday. And we're going to have out there with us the mayor. He's going to be reading. Supervisor Kennedy, Senator Pan, Assemblymember Cooper, Library Director Rifka Sass, Councilmember, former Councilmember Robbie Waters, and of course, I'll be out there to read as well. So this will be a great opportunity to come out and enjoy Dr. Seuss's birthday. And then finally, we've got a couple of grand openings in Delta Shores. Want to make sure you know that the R.C. Willie will be opening. It's a two-story store with all the furnishings and appliances that you could ask for. That'll be opening on February 28 at 5:30 p.m. That'll be their grand opening. And then our own Regal Movie Theater will open on Monday, March 5. And of course, they will have at one of their movies, Black Panther, both the regular version and the 3D version. So come on out for a great time at that grand opening as well.
Hey, could you please get some activity going on in your district, please?
Just a few, just a few.
Yeah, it's a little slow out there. Come on.
Councilman Chenier?
I feel bad.
I don't know.
I'm just going to repeat all of Rick's things. So I will be at Project Prosper tomorrow night at Fruit Ridge Community Center with Eric and Mayor will be there as well. On Thursday night, I'm going to be doing office hours from 5:30 to 7:00 at Fountainhead Brewery. And then Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association has their monthly meeting, 6:30 at Bell Coolidge Library. Friday night, we have, South City Farms is doing their own, they're creating a neighborhood association. That'll be at Maple Neighborhood Center at 4:00 p.m. 5:00 p.m. is our weekly peace walk. And this week, it will be at City Church on Fourth Avenue and 39th. And we had about 40 people still last week, and it continues to grow. And then Saturday morning, Oak Park Little League will be throwing out the opening pitch over at 9:00 a.m. at McClatchy Park. And also Tuesday night, we have a council meeting, but we also have Southland Park Community Meeting around domestic violence. And that is at 6:30. They've had some challenges in the neighborhood, and they stood up and said we need to talk about this more. That'll be at Bell Coolidge Library at 6:30 p.m. next Tuesday night, a community meeting on domestic violence.
Excellent. A lot of activity. Vice Mayor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. One announcement for tomorrow night is that McClatchy High School will be doing a community conversation, which the mayor will be at. It's from 5:30 to 7:00. And it's, I think, going to touch on some of the issues recently related to race in the HISP program and the Science Fair project, but also, we had some questions about gun safety from the students and the faculty. And so I believe those issues will also come up tomorrow. I have two items for the city manager. One, I talked to Bill Busey from Utilities about this earlier. We've had very little rain, and the city during the drought was a role model for how we implemented our water efficiency programs and our drought programs. I think it'd be helpful to have Bill and the city staff come and give us an update on where we stand with our reservoirs and what the future looks like related to conservation, and if we need to implement any additional drought measures. The second thing is something that came up earlier related to homeless patient dumping and inmate dumping. We did have an incident that the police told me about recently, where a patient was discharged from a Stockton medical facility, a quadruple amputee, put on a bus to Sacramento, and he was found sleeping in one of our central city parks the next morning. Told that he would get medical care here, but ultimately, that was not arranged for on this end. So I know I asked the city attorney to look into these incidents, but I'd also like us to look at, from the law and legislation calendar, putting an ordinance on the development agenda to deal with patient dumping and some of the inmate dumping. We also had a report recently of a Ranch Cordova arrest, brought downtown, essentially released, and that person causing problems at 10th and K. So these are big issues. They affect the whole city, but these tend to crop up a lot, I know, in the River District, in downtown, because that's where services are. And so I want to make sure that we have the appropriate ordinances in place to respond to these inhumane practices.
Like the whole subject matter referred to the Law and Leg Committee, I think.
Well, I put it on the log officially, but I want to be the sponsor of this because my district is so impacted, so.
Very good. Councilmember Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate Councilmember Warren on the opening of the second grocery store in his district, because it just seems like not that long ago, we were having these discussions around the food desert that he unfortunately was trying to fix. But he has done such a good job. He's opened two grocery stores in like one year. So that's really a big deal, and I just wanted to congratulate you on that. And then announcements in my district. One is, we just opened the nominations. This kind of Councilmember Hanson and Harris's folks can participate in this, and they both have in the past, too, for the End Factor, which is an award ceremony where community members can nominate each other if they know a business or resident or a teacher, coach, or somebody who is really going the extra mile in Natomas. So those nominations are open. They are on our website. You can just go right to angeliecashby.com and nominate whoever you'd like. And then Monday night, I think in collaboration with the mayor's office, we are hosting And then Monday night, I think in collaboration with the mayor's office, we are hosting one of the Creative Edge Town Hall Forums, uh, for our creative economy in Natomas. This will be Monday, the 26th, at the Natomas Charter School, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And anybody who wants to come talk about our economy and sort of the creative component to our economy moving forward can come. And then lastly, I have this picture I want to show you guys. Can you, can you put that up there? I had the privilege, Councilmember Carr, this is actually out in your neck of the woods, um, but these ladies are the first, they are a first ever in the City of Sacramento. They are all females, and that is the first all-female patrol unit in the City of Sacramento. They're in the south area in Councilmember Carr's community. It's seven women strong. Enroll call, so for the whole area, there are 11 people. The women actually outnumber the men, and these ladies patrol all in one unit. I went out and hung out with them for about an hour and listened to their stories, which were absolutely wonderful, about how, uh, they had one particular call. They told me about that one of them showed up at a, at a house party, and when she had to call for backup, one woman came, then another woman came, and then another woman, and pretty soon there were six women out there. And the partygoers said, "What in the heck are all the women at First Sacramento Police Department, every, all they hire is women?" And they had a good, you know, people were really supportive of them. They said a lot of the people they've had to contact have even been like, "Wow, this is pretty impressive." And as you can kind of see in that picture, they're also an extremely diverse group, uh, two Latinas, one African-American, um, and one Asian. So just really great representation with the City of Sacramento, I thought you guys would all be really excited to know, out there in the south area, I think going between Councilmember Gara and Councilmember Carr's districts, uh, there are some ladies keeping you safe. And they are ever so capable, by the way, too. Strong.
All seven strong.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Good, good productive meeting tonight, everyone. I encourage you to come out, members of the public, to these Project Prosper meetings. They really are intended, the last word, to engage, um, our community in a discussion about inclusive neighborhood-based economic development. And as we approach election season and Measure U, these discussions in our community, I think, are really timely and really important. So we hope to see you out there. Nothing further, we're adjourned.